Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. You have started an item under the consent calendar, consent agenda with regarding to the Economic Development Strategic Plan and the RFP to approve that planning process. So this presentation just briefly highlights the process and opens that up for council, further council discussion. So in January, an RFP was developed with 22 key areas of service to be delivered to the city. The overall responsibilities and scope of work for the consultant is to prepare an Economic Development Strategic Plan utilizing measurable qualitative and quantitative data gathering during the planning process. On March 27th, 2015, an RFP was sent to four companies known to provide economic development strategic plans. It was also posted online and advertised in the Daily Journal of Commerce and the Grants Pass Daily Courier. We had 17 company requests for RFP information. On May 8th, 2015, six companies participated in a pre-submital conference to discuss the project. On May 29th, we received 11 proposals from the RFP. A review committee was then formed consisting of three City of Grants Pass employees, one county commissioner, and one representative of the Small Business Development Center. And they evaluated on these four criteria: the size and reputation of the company, the fit and how it compares to the city, the written documentation matches for the RFP, and then their experience. Two proposers out of those came out well above the rest. And on June 26th, 2015, the interview committee conducted a phone interview with the two finalists. Through that and after the phone interviews, they unanimously recommended ECO Northwest, and that's why it's now in front of you. Concludes my report.
Questions for staff? Rick?
Aaron, is it possible to know just history-wise who the members of the committee were so to just have a perspective of the expertise that was involved?
So there was a member of the Small Business Development Center who was... I'd have to check the reference, I'm not sure with that. Cheryl Walker, representing the Board of Commissioners, was the representative there. She's the one that's in charge of economic development for the county or oversees that activity. And then there was Dawn Abbott, our business advocate, David Reeves, and Laura.
Dan?
We heard earlier from Tony Webb that there's been numerous studies about economic development by a whole host of different entities that, you know, we've got SO Ready and then we've got, you know, we've got all these different people that have supposedly done this. And other than what the council did by lowering SDCs, I haven't seen a whole bunch of fruit fall off of that tree. So what makes this one any different? Did we learn anything from the last bunch? And are we, or were we now just spending money for another report that comes through that really doesn't mean anything? And evidently it sounds according to she's right, and I don't know if she is or isn't, but nothing ever came from the last ones. There was recommendations, but I guess nobody followed through on it? Or, you know, what's different about this one that is the fact that the city and county are joining together? Is that the new wrinkle here?
Well, a number of entities that we are partners with were mentioned earlier under public comment. Those entities have a sole specific purpose. They've got a target, and they do a good job at those targets. This, however, has a broader approach, and it deals with a regional approach to economic development partnering with both the city and the county, something we currently do not have in existence. We do not have a regional economic development plan for Josephine County. That's what this deliverable would be. The deliverable of this would be a strategic plan with operational plans associated with that for both the city and the county focusing on economic development and how to further economic development and where we should focus our resources, both from a county and city perspective. It'll provide operating tools for the county to focus on, the city to focus on, and then also for both of us jointly to work together on to develop economic development.
Follow-up, Dan, and then Roy.
So when SO Ready comes and gives us their sales pitch, they basically say the same thing, that we're here for Josephine County and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, and we're going to do that. And then we, and every year, we join in and we pay them SO Ready. At the budget, every year, we give them money, and I don't know whether we've seen anything from SO Ready, you know, anything remarkable, that we could have kept that money in the thing and bought jail beds with it or something. But anyway, is this going to be different? Is this just focused on Josephine County and the City of Grants Pass both? Does it have anything to do with Jackson County or anything like? SO Ready, I guess, handles Jackson and Josephine and so on and so forth.
So...
Just more targeted?
Yes to your answer, and then I'll provide a qualifier. So again, SO Ready has a specific target audience. They're primarily established to look at and bring in bigger businesses and businesses to the Southern Oregon region. And they try and make a fit with those businesses coming from California or Arizona or Washington, Idaho, trying to bring in business recruitment and trying to match the local resources and what those benefits are to the business coming in. Whether it be the proper location for siting of a corporate headquarters, or it be a low per square footage price on an existing building, or it be available vacant land for industrial sites, those are the type of things SO Ready is really focused on and does a good job with the Southern Oregon region. They represent all of Southern Oregon. So that is just one portion. That's one leg of a centipede when it comes to economic development. Small business development, one leg, another leg of the centipede. What this does is this tries to take a look at the centipede as a whole and tries to determine what legs we should be utilizing resources for and what would be the best portion of those resources to be spent on. And then it provides us with targets and some kind of metrics to where we can determine how we're doing and steps to help us get us there. And again, it's a regional approach that focuses more on what are our benefits? What should we be focusing on? Should we put all of our resources in traded sector? We used to do that from a city's perspective a number of years ago. It was focused solely on traded sector. Or should we go away from traded sector? Should we focus on business retention and growth? Is that where we're going to get our best dollars and our best bang for our buck? Or should we focus on travel and tourism? Is that where the growing economy is for the city? Or do we have the infrastructure and the square footage and the acreage to be the best industrial sites for Southern Oregon? These type of questions would be answered through this planning process. It truly is a strategic plan similar to the strategic planning process that you go through on an annual basis. The benefits of that strategic planning process, you recognize on a daily, weekly, and yearly basis. On the benefits of having a work plan that will follow the strategic plan, that will establish those goals, it provides you with direction to want where you're going and how you're going to get there. We technically do not have that for Josephine County. We technically don't have that from a regional approach, regionally, for Josephine County and the City of Grants Pass. Yes, there are other entities that are doing portions of that, but those are all just legs of a centipede. There is no real overall strategic planning document or strategy that helps us be as efficient and as effective as possible with the limited resources we have for economic development.
Roy?
Thank you, Aaron. As an aspect of a little history, I was on a task force that was directed by the county commissioners to SO Ready to develop a strategic plan for the county. And there was about 15 people, 15 maybe 20, I don't remember exactly, people in this task force. And we worked many sessions, many meetings, and we came up with a overall draft perspective that we felt was, had some good ideas in it. And as soon as it was presented to each commissioner individually for comment, it was made public and improperly characterized by certain individuals. And the whole thing died because it was torpedoed big time. And it was very frustrating at that time because we had spent so much time, so many meetings, really drilling down and looking at various aspects. And so I applaud the attempt to get a more global view of Josephine County in terms of a strategic plan. That task force was approaching that, and it was, it really had some good ideas in it. Those ideas probably are not going to be as effective today as they were then because conditions have changed, changed drastically. And so in terms of resurrecting something like that, I personally don't think it's a good idea. I think we need to start with a clean slate and really go at it with vigor and determination. So from a historical point of view, it has been tried, it has been attempted, but the one incidence that I was involved in was a dismal failure because of certain political attitudes.
Ken?
I'd like, as a point of clarification, I'd like to bring it forward that the two people that talked in the public comment, they made it sound like the city was going to pay the $112,000. And I want to make that clear that we're not paying the whole thing. There's going to be a contribution from the county. And I think they neglected to make those statements when they said it started at one point and jumped up to that $112,000. So I just wanted to clarify that on the record.
Yeah, Aaron?
Yeah, that, Counselor Hammond, that's a good point. This is a partnership. The county's gone in with the county. The city has gone in with the county to try and have some kind of collaborative approach to this. And that includes not only from a planning standpoint, but also from a funding standpoint. The city has budgeted $75,000. The county actually has budgeted, I believe, about $37,000 for this project to go in partnership with the city on.
Yes. Dan, and then Roy?
So I've gone through the packet, and I don't see anywhere it said you got two bids back, two that you were in the final, that were in the final go-round, and of the two, unanimously you all picked one. What was their bid? Was there a bid? Or did they just agree to do something for $112,500?
Yeah, they did, they did provide a proposal with that dollar amount in it with the services that we, that responded to the RFP.
So you had a list of services that you wanted to accomplish with this?
Twenty-two, 22 different aspects of economic development that we were wanting to address.
And then did they know that you had $112,500 in the kitty? And say, "Yeah, we can do all 22 for that amount"? Or did you go out and say, "These are the 22 things. How many, how much is it going to cost us to get a recommendations on all of these", and they come back with $97,000? Or did they know this $112.50 first?
So when it comes to professional services, we're looking at the competitive bidding process. We look at qualifications as the number one. Price is secondary. So you, and that's part of the law you have to follow, but the price and the dollar amount was, I believe, available and printed in that because we're looking at qualifications, not necessarily cost. Qualifications was first.
Okay, because I know how it is at home. If I give my wife a $100 bill, it's gone. But if I say, "Go buy what you need," she may come back for $87.50. I don't know. Just a question.
And how many of them came up with that number? Hundred and twelve? Were most of the proposals for that amount?
Was there more? Was there some of them that were higher than that?
Most of the bids were right on that target. It seems like to me there was one or two that were slightly higher, and I think one below it, but it was, it was less than maybe $7,000 below. So they were all right in that range.
Thank you. I'm not paying attention anymore. Roy, and then Dennis.
Aaron, where is, are the funds for this coming from?
So we have $75,000 that was approved in this year's budget that the Budget Committee approved, and that went through the strategic planning process, and those are general fund dollars. And then the $37,000, so dollars from the county, it's coming from county dollars. I can't speak for the county totally, but I understand that they are utilizing some of their lottery travel tourism dollars for that investment.
Dennis?
When we were reviewing these, you were reviewing the applicants, was there any consideration done of their bodies of work, their previous bodies of work, and also any possible biases? Because to me, ECO Northwest is pretty anti-logging as far as I'm concerned, which is kind of a big deal since that used to be our mainstay around here, and hopefully it'll still play a part in it. And anyway, I just wondered if there's any consideration given to that.
I'll let Laura respond to that since she was on the evaluation team.
Well, each of the proposals had comparable projects that they had worked on. And one of the things that we liked about ECO, and of course with ECO, you've got multiple different consultants that have, that come in, and this group had specialties in marketing, economics, and branding. So as we discussed earlier about even setting aside our current marketing or branding program, their economic strategy plan will include some of that. But the specialists here on this team seemed very dynamic, interested in small towns and looking at what is special about Grants Pass and what we can focus on with this. So I think they're going to, this group is going to be broad, so I'm not sure, familiar with the folks that might have come down to the Rotary meeting that you talked about before, Counselor Roller. So I don't know if they're the same people, but they were very interested in focusing on Grants Pass and gave very good comparables for other communities that they had succeeded in their projects.
Follow-up? Dennis?
Well, I, it wasn't just the Rotary. I mean, I've dealt with these people for 20 years in the newspaper biz. And one of the things on their website was "Done for the Sierra Club," in which they downplayed all the thousands of lost jobs in the Pacific Northwest and said that basically Pacific Northwest had weathered virtually unscathed the national economic recession and that natural forests now produce goods and services that are much more significant than the value of logging. "The Forest Service Logging Program has caused devastating impacts in the ability of natural forests to provide economically valuable goods and services. Reversing the damage caused by logging would be costly, but ignoring the need to restore damaged forests will cost even more." So based on things like this and what's happened in the past, I just, I have my doubts as to whether these guys can provide an unbiased view of the timber industry as the future, a future in Grants Pass, I guess. And the county.
Dan?
This is a kind of a joint thing between Grants Pass, City of Grants Pass, and Josephine County. Are they on board with this? Have you already had this conversation across the pond?
Yes, and I actually believe the county has already approved their end of the contract.
Okay, I know that Sheriff Walker, Commissioner Walker was on the board, correct? And this has already gone through there?
Yes.
Approval process, and now it's up to us, and away we go. Okay, thank you very much.
If council has hesitation or additional questions, specifically, I know you're asking good questions of staff from a perspective of process and implementation and how it might affect the city. But if you have specifics with regards to them, you could always, we could always establish some kind of a phone interview or a workshop or something if you so desire.
Well, and this is kind of the end of our discussion where there's no public comment. This is it. So if you want to speak, this is it, buddy. Mark?
Well, I think that's, I almost called you Commissioner. Counselor Roller made a, I think, a very valid point. I mean, I looked on their website, I couldn't find anything. I looked at their consultants, I couldn't find anything that raised any red flags. But I don't have the interaction that Counselor Roller's had in the past, and I certainly didn't have this paper that was published that, to me, says a lot. I mean, if you're, if you're going to have these types of viewpoints about the Northwest that, as we know, are not indicative of reality, I think that it behooves us to maybe bring these points up to Commissioner Walker to, that might have been something that escaped her in her understanding. Because as I said, I looked at their website, I couldn't find the paper that you referenced. And I looked at the, several of the folks that are their consultants, and they are very widely diverse. You know, on the surface, I would say, "Hey, these guys are on top of their game." I mean, at the top of their game. I would, I would see that, and I would concede that. However, when you say that the Pacific Northwest went virtually unscathed in the economic downturn, I'm thinking, what planet was that referencing? Economic Northwest of whose world are you living on? So I would, I would think that maybe we can table this and look at it at a different, at a different time and maybe bring these points up to the commissioners, look at it once more, and if perhaps this was an anomaly or that, that, and I'm giving, I'm going to the benefit of the doubt here, you know, those viewpoints are no longer theirs, you know, it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be against hiring them and giving them the contract if I felt better about it. At this time, I really don't feel that great about it.
Rick, and then Dan?
I guess I feel somewhat uneducated on this, and I would like to see if a presentation that enlightened us a little bit better with some of their background and what Laura's learned in being on the committee, just to hear different viewpoints. I'm a little hesitant running back to the county and saying, you know, "Stop and hold everything at the moment." But I think it would be, to me, as a council member, I would like more information.
Dan?
Was the, in the discussion of what we wanted to get out of this report, was timber ever brought up as a bullet point? That, you know, we recognize timber in Josephine County and is a, is a big deal on federal land? And was that ever brought up as a viable thing? Or is it just something, "No, we're going to, we're going to overlook it because we think timber needs to be preserved for everybody in New York, so therefore we're going to just write it out of the thing and move on to making bowling balls with four thumb holes"?
I would need to go back and look at the proposal. I didn't draft the proposal. I believe it was Dawn Abbott that pulled that together. So, you know, when you go through 11 of these different reports, we, I was looking for different things, and I personally didn't focus on timber. So I would be uncomfortable answering that one way or the other for you. But we certainly can go back and pull that information and give you a better breakdown of what the proposal included.
Well, I think I, then I think I'm going to kind of lean towards what Dennis brings up, a very good point, and it's something that I think this body needs to look into just a smidgen further before we go on. That's my own personal opinion.
Jim?
I think I can say this because I spent a lot of years, nearly 10, in the, in the timber industry where my family's meals depended on the paycheck that I got. I don't know what we're doing here because out of all of those proposals that the city got, if I'm grading those and one of these companies come in and says, "Hey, you know what? Number one bullet point, let's bring logging back. I'm going to take your $100,000, and that's going to be in my plan," they would have been laughed out, the first one out the door. I think they can have, dare I say, liberal views about the Pacific Northwest and forests and still do an outstanding job in economic development, which is the future of Grants Pass and Josephine County. If that happens to be, man, I am all for ramping up more timber production. The county across the parking lot is really all for it. The commissioners have been grappling with this and have seats on very important boards at the state level. They didn't overlook this. I would just caution, rather than holding up the process, when we finally have a partnership with the county, and the process, by the way, Aaron, good job. I mean, if we need to micromanage a process where, how many, how many put in a proposal?
We had 11 submit proposals.
If we have an RFP process and 11 proposals come in and our city staff are not competent enough in coordination with the county to pick the right one, let's fire them all and do the job ourself. We just need to approve this.
Anyone else? Dennis?
Just, I just want to know, we get a report that's an objective one, that doesn't start off with a bias. That's what I'm looking at. You know, I mean, just to read you a little bit more on this report for the Sierra Club, "Despite years of rhetoric and misinformation, national and regional economies are not dependent on logging national forests." That's what we do in Josephine County, 68% of our property.
I would agree with that 100%, but I don't think it disqualifies this firm from putting together an economic development plan.
Roy?
It seems to me that going along with what Counselor Goodwin says, perhaps we could approve this with a statement, a consensus of the council, that we want at least the primary resource of this county to be at least considered in, granted, it's a very, very complex issue. There are so many things. But when you consider that 68, 70% of the county is timberland owned by federal government, plus some actually owned by the county, I think we could, we could easily approve the contract and then make the statement that we want at least consideration of the primary resource that we have, which also includes mining.
Dan?
I like, I'm sure glad Jim spoke up. I've been waiting. Because he has a lot of wisdom in what he says. We may be looking at it from what, from maybe what Jim didn't mention is that a lot of times, we might be so blinded by the past that we fail to look at opportunity coming right at us. There may be opportunity across another whole section of our economy that we're not even considering. One of the things that I would really hope would come out of this thing is our lack of employable people. That's one of the big things when people say, "I need, I need workers," and they're not qualified, they're not certified to weld, they're not, they don't know how to, you know, put a bolt, a nut on a bolt, you know, and I need qualified people. And that's a big statement that might come out of this thing, that we need to, we need to spend a tremendous amount of more time and effort educating our people in the trades. And, but I think, I, you know, I, I'm glad you brought me down to earth on the micromanaging part. I think that if, if the whole task force, because we ask the task force to do this, and then we kind of second-guess them when they do the job we ask them to do. And I appreciate Dennis's report because what it does, it keeps that eye on them, doesn't it? And so when we start seeing that, if we see any language in their report that says, you know, "Yeah, you guys, we don't want to, you know, cut any, prune any trees or whatever," then we're in trouble. But I think that we need to really look, and maybe they'll have so whole different ideas of something that would love to come here that we haven't even thought of because it's not in our realm. So I'm, you know, I'm going to change my stance on it, and I'm ready for somebody to make a motion.
We're not there yet. Mark?
Well, I'm still of the opinion that if you're, if you're coming from a biased standpoint, you're not going to include timber. If you have an opinion that is on paper, that's been published, that says timber jobs are not important in the Northwest, that the economic devastation that is done to forests by logging, without any kind of reference to responsible, irresponsible, just logging in general. in general, when you have that kind of bias against it, how is that going to be included in the process? I would submit that on the surface, as Dennis has pointed out, it's not going to be. Now, I don't know if that, during the process, we can stop at midstream, if we get, you know, quarterly reports or, you know, benchmarks or whatever, that we can say, "Hey, you haven't included logging. Where's the logging?" At that point, we've already hired these guys. We've already signed the contract. And they say, "Well, we don't think logging is in your future. We don't think that's a good idea for you because there's no evidence that shows that logging jobs are important in Josephine County." That's not okay because we've already spent the money, we've already signed the contract. So, I think it, I truly believe that we are here as a council to look at that, not to micromanage. We found, how many, how many times do we just approve, improve, and approve? Okay, here's, here's a portion that, wait a minute, we've got a little red flag here. And it may not be so little. It may be pointed to a serious issue that could torpedo a well-rounded economic plan, one that includes logging. I mean, I'm all for bringing new industry here. Please. I want it, okay? But we have to include what is natural for us and what is responsible for us. And there are responsible practices that are not being handled because you've got economic, I don't want to say the wrong word, but you have, you have folks that have no use at all for using the minerals or the timber that is in our lands and use to responsibly handle those. And so, you have these huge fires, and you have the problems that comes with that. We need to have a company that has that in mind. And if this is, if what Councilor Roller has brought up to us is indicative of their mindset, then we're not going to be, we're not going to find out that answer until it's well into the report or maybe at the end of the report. And then, what do you say? Come up with a new one? Well, we want a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Or, you know, another, you know, submit another RFP. I don't know where in the process that happens. Can we indicate and demand that logging be a part of this? And would that be sufficient if you have someone whose mindset is already set, dead set against it? "Oh, they want logging. Okay, well, here's a, you know, you can do that over there. And there's your twenty-five logs per year that you can have."
And then Ken?
Now, that report that they wrote there, they were, they were working for the Sierra Club? Were they just giving the Sierra Club what the Sierra Club wanted here? I mean, they were just walking in and they knew the Sierra Club's are going to go in and say, "Yep, log the planet, you know, we'll replant next week." And they are going to go to the Sierra Club and tell them, "Oh, don't touch a stick." And that, you know, that's, I'm looking at who they were working for there to, you know, maybe they gave a very one-sided biased point of it. But, so, I'm stuck on, I'm on the fence, so I need convincing one way or the other.
Ken? Mark? Dennis?
I thought we were done.
We were once.
After listening to everybody, and I think I want to go back to Mr. Kubik's suggestion, is that maybe we do need a conference to ask those questions direct from us. I don't know if that's possible or if we had some people that could sit there and, like we've done on PAVE when we've interviewed the auditors, on the police and fire and things like that, we sit there and ask questions for sometimes forty-five minutes. And maybe we'll come back, we could come back or two or three of the, in the staff, maybe sit down and ask those questions directly and see what kind of answer we get. That would be, because I'm like Dan, I'm kind of, I'm going to pull a good one. Sixty, forty-one, forty-nine, fifty-one percent, as somebody used to tell us. Golly.
With the follow-up of which side you were leaning. Wait a minute, I have Mark, Dennis, and then Jim. I can't just go by raised hands. Mark?
Well, in answer to your, to your statement, Councilor DeYoung, Sierra Club is not going to go to a pro-logging company and get them to print out their diatribe. They're going to go to somebody who is like-minded with them. And I would submit to you that they, that's exactly what they did.
If I may, can we table this for a conversation? Like, can we do this in a workshop where we make a phone call and ask a few questions? Aaron?
Mayor, you guys can certainly do that. We will be more than happy to schedule with Econ Northwest a time during a workshop for a phone call and conference call for questions.
Okay. Dennis? And then Jim?
Well, I think Mark already covered my point of view on that one, that what Councilor DeYoung had brought up, just looking at it the other way.
Thank you. Jim?
Real quickly, and I'll be done because I think it's going in that direction. We're going to hold up the process that's been in motion for a long time. There is nothing stopping this council from insisting that part of our strategic plan going forward will include every tree we can possibly cut down. I'll start my saw first. We can appoint a task force that says, "Why don't we go out and study the feasibility of increased logging in Josephine County? Maybe we can cut some trees down in Riverside Park, too." That opportunity can be bade and expanded with or without this plan. What I'm looking for, looking forward, is some recommendations about, I don't know, tech or travel or tourism or expanding things and new ideas. Nothing prevents this council from moving forward and seeing to it, in coordination with the county across the parking lot, that we, I am a hundred percent for it. Don't misquote me on this, Jim. The natural resource, that I am for it, one hundred percent. I just see two different issues going on here. That's all.
Well, and I know that there are people that represent us on the federal level that are fighting for logs. And we have people at the state level, believe it or not, fighting for logging rights. We have, our county commissioners, like was mentioned earlier, are on boards and task forces to try and get the logging back at some level. So, that's kind of the elephant in the room economic development-wise for me. I think we're already working that one, just a little too late, and now we're having to work even harder. Just my two cents. So, do you have anything to add, Aaron, before we decide what next?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Anyway, I would like to pull this out of the consent agenda and have us deal with it separately, if that's okay with the council, so that we don't mess up our whole consent agenda. So, pulling item A, I would entertain a motion for its future. What is the future of A? Roy?
I move that the resolution be adopted.
I have a second by Jim. Any further discussion, dare I ask? All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? One. Any abstentions? Mark, are you voting one way or the other on this?
I apologize.
No problem.
I'm confused here because we pulled it.
Off consent. Now, we're voting on it individually.
We're voting on it individually.
Individually.
To pass it as it sits.
Mm-hmm. That was the motion. So, let me start over. All those in favor, please? So, we're changing a vote?
We pulled.
We pulled it, and now we're voting on it separately from the consent calendar?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And go with it.
That we go with it. Roy's motion was to approve, yes. And so, all those in favor of approving three A, please raise your hand. Okay, I got three. All those opposed? I got three. Anybody abstaining? Rick, I'd have you explain why you're abstaining.
Yes, I, I feel, I would like more information to hear where they're coming from, and I would like to know that they're balanced on their perspective and that when they, when they look at the county, that they're not just focusing in, I don't say they can't focus in areas of their specialty, but that they give the full perspective because we do have resources here that are not being used and should have that opportunity. And I think they, they themselves, since even if they've been on the other side, could even portray that picture or the obstacles that are before us and say it's not viable. But I guess I would like to think that could be part of the process when they present it to us as an economic plan, that they at least have that aspect included. And I'm not sure, it's too late for that to be included.
So, we have a vote of three to three, and I'm going to vote yes in the affirmative. And so, the motion carries.